Good morning, everyone. It's 10 o'clock and we are going to get our meeting started for this morning. Welcome, everyone, to our Snowmageddon special meeting today. It is Wednesday, February 2nd. Let's start with the call to order and pledge of allegiance. Rich, will you lead us in the pledge?
I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, your liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rich. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Mathias.
Present.
Commissioner Rosensky.
Present.
Commissioner Haney.
Present.
All three present.
Thank you, Tim. Next, we'd like to consider the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All three of us have agreed, so we will move on to the approval of the minutes for January 19th, 2022.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of our meeting of January 19th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Just as a point of order briefly here, for some reason, it says my video has been stopped by the host, and we can only participate via vote if we can both be seen and heard. So I'm not sure why my... Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I don't know why that happened. So, yeah, the three of us are supposed to appear and be able to be heard. Everyone else will be muted, just as a way to make sure that we are conducting our meeting as simply as possible. So if you are not muted, I believe our Darlene, who's managing the meeting, will mute you. I think Mike Sykes may need to be muted. Sorry, Mike. Everyone else, it just makes it a little bit easier. So if your children are home for their e-learning day, or your dog decides to bark, we're all good.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So next on the agenda, we have the consideration of claims. Mr. Stavos?
Commissioners, we have payroll in the amount of the period ending January 28th, 2022, in the amount of $1,284,142.90. And we have operating expense claims in the amount of $3,287,93.7. All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Roder. Move to approve the claims as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have three ayes. The ayes have it. Next, under correspondence, we have the review, the opinion from the Public Access Counselor on the legality of the prior county commission meeting. I don't have a copy of that. Do either of you have one that you could read into the record? Or maybe Mr. Friedman might have?
All my stuff is at the office.
I do have a copy of it here in front of me.
Would you mind reading that, Mr. Haney?
Sure.
Thank you.
This is a letter from Luke Britt, the Public Access Counselor, dated January 24th, 2022, at 5:25 in the evening. It says, "Commissioner Haney, thanks for reaching out. I read what Chris previously wrote to you, and I agree with his analysis. But I'll add some commentary. The resolution/policies passed by some municipalities are in anticipation of when the public health emergency expires. They are predicated on the expiration and are entirely optional at the discretion of the will of the board. Most boards who pass them simply did so in order that they not be rushed into place once the emergency ends. They are a placeholder, waiting for conditions to change. No vote is really needed on when a meeting goes virtual, only that a majority of a board, in parentheses, only its presiding officer, in parentheses, deems it appropriate. At best, the local resolution is merely opt-in on an as-needed basis for now. Once the public health emergency expires, then I agree that it's the controlling authority, so long as it is consistent with the statute that allows it, which is IC 514 1.5-3.5. Therefore, the fact that the county held a virtual meeting is not an issue with either the local resolution or the open door law, as I interpret both. It can do so for the foreseeable future, so long as the emergency order is in effect. It's been close to expiring a couple of times, but this keeps creeping up on us. Hopefully, this will be the last time. Have a good evening, Luke."
Is there any discussion about the communication?
I understand that we're still in emergency situation until March 4th. Is that correct?
Yes, the governor this morning, we received word that the governor had expanded the COVID pandemic emergency order until March 4th. So until March 4th, the Public Access Counselor has assured us that should we need to have meetings via Zoom only. Obviously, today, our plan was to have a hybrid meeting, and then Mother Nature decided to throw off the curve. So we went into emergency mode by having our meeting virtually, so that everyone could stay safe and still be present, as well as all the public. So today is a day where a lot of other folks are home as well, because the schools are closed. Some other businesses are closed. So hopefully, that gives people who are interested in observing or making public comment at our meeting, gives them an opportunity to do so. So there are some benefits from the pandemic, is that lots of people who normally would not learn how to use Zoom have learned how to use Zoom, and it's made us, our meetings, much more accessible for lots of people. So that's a good thing.
Actually, we have 65 people in our meeting today. That's more than we have, well, we have it live. And that's 65 people that are not out on the roads, getting in the way of the snowplows, or further endangering the public, or causing more jobs for the Sheriff's Department. Listening to the scanner, everybody's going nuts out there. So this is a good thing.
Yeah. Thank you for that commentary. It does keep people safe, and that's a good thing, as well as giving folks that may not be able to get to the complex for various reasons, it gives them an opportunity to observe and to be part of the democratic process. So that's all good. Any other comments?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. The original letter that I had received from the Public Access Counselor's office, which predated this, this is earlier in January, and which was before our last meeting, said, and this is from Deputy Public Access Counselor Christopher Kundif. He said that, well, first, he apologizes for the delay, because there were some issues related to some other things, but we'll get to the relevant point here. He says that the will of the board would govern the issue. Since the governor extended the emergency, the provisions in Section 3.7 are available, which, of course, was my understanding of it at the time as well. 3.7 doesn't obviously require us to meet virtually. It simply gives us the option if we so choose. He goes on to say here, "At the same time, the board is," as I just said, "not required to meet electronically under 3.7. As a result, I'd say your local resolution would control unless the Board of Commissioners votes to meet in accordance with 3.7. Let us know if you have additional questions. Sincerely, Chris." So going into the last meeting, the information from the Public Access Counselor's office was contrary to the letter that I just read, which was the most recent letter from them. And if you'll note in the beginning of that letter that I read in, the Public Access Counselor Luke Britt starts out with, "I read what Chris previously wrote to you, and I agree." And then, of course, he goes on for the next two and a half paragraphs to then disagree. It's a quite curious position, I think. I mean, obviously, this is the position, current position of the Public Access Counselor. So it is what it is. But I think it's an interesting position that one can hold that, since state law gives local communities the authority to impose stricter resolutions, which we have done, that somehow what state law says and what our local ordinance says doesn't necessarily mean what it says because COVID. And I understand where the Public Access Counselor is coming from on this. If he would have continued with the original position from Chris that I had received, that I went on and based most of what I determined for the last meeting to be there, which was at the time, the actual position of Public Access Counselor's office. So I was acting in accordance with that during the last meeting. If he were to have upheld that and kept that out, then we would see dozens of municipalities from across the state in the same boat that we were under, as far as not having taken into account or given any authority to actually meet under 3.7, under the resolution that we had passed. Obviously, Commissioner Rosensky made a motion at the last meeting and ratified it. It was ratified by two of three commissioners, and the position of Public Access Counselor states now that this is where we are. So personally, I don't think this would hold up under judicial review, but it is what it is, and it's what we have to go on right now. So hopefully, that puts it in context for folks who are curious as to what happened last meeting.
Very helpful.
Thank you.
The only addendum I would say, Mr. Haney, is that our lawyer, when the county asked the question, the county commission asked the question to our lawyer as to whether a Zoom meeting was appropriate because of the public health emergency. He assured us, and I saw numerous communications with you regarding that it was legal for us to have a Zoom meeting, because they're happening all over the state, and it has been vetted. And in addition, when we're getting statements from some of the folks in Indianapolis, it's probably best to go to the Chief Public Access Officer. Luke is the one we always go to for opinions, especially when it's something that's public like that. So I would just recommend that we talk to Mr. Britt in the future, rather than one of the staff folks, if it's something as important as taking a position on a public meeting. So moving on, let's start with public comment. So I want to review a few things regarding public comment. We've had a couple comments in the last few meetings that have created some strife, attacks on people's character and that. And, you know, this is a business meeting. So this is, you know, you have a right to your opinions on lots of different things, but this is the county's business meeting, and we are trying to run the operations of our county. So just a reminder that we are focused on civility. Three years ago, we passed a policy to encourage effective and efficient use of public comment. And, you know, I'm actually really proud that this commission stood for the public to have a right to come to their meetings as we welcome public comment. But there are some guidelines. So there's two that I wanted to stress today. No person may present orally or discuss at any meeting of the board any charges or complaints against individual employees of the county, department heads, professional advisors, or elected officials without first presenting such charges or complaints to the board through the presiding officer in writing, signed, and verified by the group or the person making the charges or complaints. So this is not the place to bring your public charges. If you have something that you want to complain about, we welcome those ideas, but there's a process for that. And then remarks of any person addressing the board, which reflect adversely upon the character and motives of any other person or group, are out of order. Again, this is a business meeting. If you want to complain about things, you can write a letter to the newspaper. You can go on social media. You can carry a sign. Those are all perfectly advisable. And in our country, we welcome your right to freedom of speech. But this is a business meeting, and we'd like to hold it as a business meeting for the county. So with that being said, there's a, under Reactions, down at the bottom of your screen. If you click on Reactions, you will see the Raise Hand function. If you would like to participate during public comment, if you would raise your hand, and then I will go through and begin to call on people as I see them raising their hand. So if you don't have your name, I'll just use whatever initial or word you have up there. So the first person is someone RGV.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Randy Veach, 4177 West Schultz Road. I read in your minutes that you're going to be talking about an update with the MS4 department on item number 12E. And when that discussion is going on, from receiving, we're all in receipt of the letter that we got from Mr. Friedman. I truly wish you would refrain from pulling me into the bi-weekly fiasco that you guys keep throwing on. I'm here for one reason, one reason only, the sand mining operation behind my house. Mr. Rosensky, I want to correct you where you said 65 people is the most people that have been in there. I believe we had over 65 people when it started, in the Commissioners' meeting, and also the planned commission. Anyway, I'm back to the letter that I got from Mr. Friedman. It says that we are now calling these operations large-scale sand removal operations. I don't find anywhere where that's defined in the zoning code. This has all been a word game, and it's continuing to be into a new word game. If you look up the definition of large-scale sand removal operations, it says sand mining in every publication you go to. But we're going to use this word here. I don't understand the verbiage on that. He goes to criticize me for about three or four paragraphs, goes to belittle me in about another three or four paragraphs, not appreciated at all. So if I conduct this as a business myself, everything I do, I've been very professional all along. I don't appreciate the county attorney acting and treating me less than professional. All right. He goes on to say, "Miss Mathias, I greatly appreciate it. Looks like you're grabbing the bull by the horns again on this, and I thank you for that." It says, "There are flaws in the MS4 permitting process that need cured." This is done by people. It's not the process, it's the people. The people have to create the loopholes. The people have to find the loopholes. It's not just done. It's all based on the zoning code. Mr. Friedman wants to keep on saying, "I'm going down the wrong route, because I keep bringing up the zoning code." Everything he's trying to do to stop the MS4 permit is based on the zoning code. It says so in his own letter. He just doesn't realize he even said it. He states that it is against the zoning code. I say that we investigate the paperwork. I have been saying we investigate the paperwork. I've been asking for this investigation to go on. I have the Rule 5 construction plan elements that was created for D&amp;M excavating by Charles Hendrickson Associates. I'm not being a name-broer. I'm reading a direct piece of paper. You all have been given this piece of paper by me several times. It goes on to talking about a land clearing contouring for future development. That needs a permit according to the zoning code. There's no ifs, ands, or buts. It needs a permit. He doesn't have a local permit, yet it is allowed. It goes on to say that the, there's several lines of items. I'm just line item after line item. I'm just pointing out the ones that are erroneous. It goes on to the adjacent land use, including upstream watershed. Land to the north, east, and west is residential lots. The south is arsely wooded. Again, the south lots are my house, are my neighbor's houses, all the homes that are missing off of the paperwork. How does somebody miss homes on a paperwork? We'll get into the name of the person who authored this, as I'm going through too, because he signed it, and I'm not being a name-broer. I'm reading a piece of paper. It says, "D&amp;M excavating is the contractor for the site." No, he's the owner of the site. It talks about how their... Am I still on?
I can hear you, Mr. Veach.
Okay, thank you. It says that there's refueling that would be done at the end of the parking lot, to where they prevent from pollution.
I can no longer hear Mr. Veach.
That several times. Never did it from anybody. It just continues on and on, air after air, showing where my home, my property line, is a vegetation buffer for them. This is my property. I've pointed this out to you several times. This is erroneous paperwork. The homes that are missing show right up, which get into beating. You can find the homes. The homes are all right there. This is the same contour, same land. And again, how does this show anything that's being done? Right in your code book, within, I believe, its article, section 1, it talks how it has to be a detailed plan. It just can't be a five-year operation, non-ending. The paperwork got turned into Rick Brown. It was prepared by Charles Hendrickson Associates. It was marked as plan is adequate, that there was absolutely nothing wrong. Anthony Hendricks is the one that filled out all this paperwork. I would believe Anthony Hendricks and his title that he holds within LaPorte County and the positions he holds within LaPorte County would be held to a higher standard than erroneous paperwork, missing homes, missing items, talking of things that are getting done that have never been done. The MS4 never once answered a call that I made about debris blowing onto my land. Never once came out and did anything about the sand at the end of the road. If they did, it sure was hidden from me, because I never seen it. I never was addressed about it, and I'm the one that had to drive through this constantly, and still drive through it constantly.
Mr. Veach, just a point of order. You've gone past your three minutes. Well passed. If you could just kind of wrap things up, that'd be great.
Okay. I thank you very much for your time. And again, I truly hope that we do not keep playing the word game, and I truly hope we do an investigation on the paperwork. And I apologize for going over my three minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Can someone unmute Mrs. Graham Rosa, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. So there's a couple of things I'd just like to comment on. I know that I won't get a response. First one is on your agenda, 10C. Permission to seek bids for cleaning company from Michigan City Courthouse. Debt department has been increased by one cleaning person last year. If courthouse is privatized, how many employees will be let go of? Mr. Levandowski has the same amount of cleaning staff that the last three directors have had. He's minus a county home and picked up a community building at the fairgrounds. Wouldn't it make sense to contract the fairground facilities when heavily used versus the courthouse? Second thing I'd like to say is, the chat on the Zoom is unavailable. I think that it would be useful to have that available, since just before me, when Mr. Veach was speaking, there was a moment where we couldn't hear him, and that chat would be useful in order to let everyone know that we can't hear individuals. The third thing I'd like to say is, on the agenda, under 12B, consider Commission President designee as POA, which would, I would think, be... designate as POA on vehicle titles. And I hope that you give a detail on why you're going to make that change, or why the commission feels that they need to make that change. And that would be it. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Rodney McCormick, 617 Union Street, Michigan City. I hear a lot of us in all through the county, Michigan City, complaining about what's going on with the county commissioners, how we dislike this and how we dislike that, especially when it comes to the county attorney. I just want to say to everybody in the county, election time is right around the corner. We're not going to get nowhere with any of these commissioners, other than Mr. Haney. We have to just take a logical approach to this, and it's simple. We must vote for change. And when we do that, we won't have to deal with, we won't have to deal with the county attorney no more. We won't have to deal with the county attorney puppets no more. Until we do that, it's going to continue to go on and on and on. And the last county commissioner meeting, I'd just like to say, is very disturbing, Ms. Mathias, Ms. Madam President, Madam Queen. It's amazing how you allow Rich Rosensky to use the language that he used against another, one of the stow commissioners. It's shameful. The rules don't apply to no one but us, the general public. Come Election Day, we can put an end to all of this. Everybody in the county, join me. I'm voting Republican. Thank you. Goodbye.
Are we allowing campaign speeches today, Mr. President?
Yeah.
Yes, we are. Yes, we are.
That's a good point, Mr. Rosensky. So this is a business meeting, and it is not a campaign rally for any parties. So I would appreciate if you respected that. Thank you. So next, we have Lisa Pierzakowski.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lisa Pierzakowski, Senator Township Trustee. I just wanted to give you an update on the indiana housingnow.org applications, known as IHCDA applications. I was on the phone the other night with Jacob Sykes, because, as you know, I've been working with the county evictions for 20 of the 21 townships, and I'm spending a lot of time working with the landlords and working with the states. So that's many emails going out, probably 50-plus emails a day, going back and forth between myself and the state. And as Jake said, they can't keep up with my emails. He doesn't know how one person does it. I told him I don't sleep very much, but he finally admitted that they are short-staffed, that they are having trouble keeping staff, just like everybody else. So they are not able to push their applications through as quickly as they said that they would be able to. So we're going to have to do this a different direction. Again, we're going to, if the landlords will not wait, we will have to fund these. And then I will have to go to court and have it put in the order with the judges, and I'm going to be emailing the judges later for a meeting, have to have it put in the order that they will reimburse the township and the county, which would come back to my office to go back into the funds, for any of the rent that is paid back from the state. So say that I fund Joe's rent today, and then the state processes that claim, and the landlord gets that funding in the next three weeks. They would have to reimburse the money that we paid out. So that is a bookkeeper's nightmare. One of the landlords I was working with said they would wait. Well, it's now three-plus weeks, and they said it's going on three months for some of their clients, and the landlords higher up will not wait anymore. So that's where we're at. So it's going to be a little bit more time-consuming, but, you know, we're trying to keep as many people in their houses as possible, because, as everybody knows, we're still very short on housing in LaPorte County. So I just want to give you an update.
Lisa, thank you for all you do. Do we have anyone else? Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak at this time? I'm kind of perusing this. We have three screens of participants, which is really great. It's nice to see so many people involved and interested in our work. Anyone else from the public who wishes to speak at this time?
Hello, Madam President.
Yes.
Mr. England. How are you?
Thank you.
Hi. Just a quick question, again, regarding what Ms. Graham Rosa had mentioned earlier about 12B, the POA. I was curious if someone could answer not only why the change, which I don't even dispute right now. I'm just curious on who the current POA is, who pays for the titles, and who actually manages the plates of the vehicles currently. And then maybe you can expound a little on why the change. That's the only question I have.
If I could respond to that, Madam President, I think the, I think the item should have reflected the fact that we were looking to place Major Hafercamp as a designee on the vehicle titles for the Sheriff's Department. And so that's really what the, and I appreciate the clarification by Mr. England. I mean, the designation should have been made clear when the agenda was set up. The Commissioners own all the, our title on all the vehicles, but for some of the Sheriff's Department vehicles, it was felt easier and quicker to go ahead and let Major Hafercamp be the designee for those vehicle titles. So that's why the item was attended.
Well, the actual vehicles are titled in county and whoever's driving the vehicle as well?
Yes. The, no, the county commission is the only entity able to hold the title.
Okay.
For all vehicles. And so this particular item was placed there simply to help expedite transfers on Sheriff's Department vehicles, and that way, it's of record at this point going forward.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation, Sean. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? All right. I don't see any other handful. Let's move on. Next on the agenda, we have Department Head Reports or Comments. Are there any Department Head?
Are there any department heads who wish to speak at this time? I know some of you were planning on making presentations and you've decided to hold it until our next meeting, which we presume will be in person, which obviously for a presentation in person is definitely Trump's Zoom. So if, if, if there are any department heads who would like to speak at this time, this is a great time to just give a business report. Tony, go ahead.
Yes, good morning, Madam President, members of the commission. We are, we're excited to be finalizing and prepared to publish our 2021 annual report for the department. I believe what is going to be a very productive, detailed analysis of activities. But the, I mean, what, I believe what our, our annual report is going to be highlighting is the collaborative nature of the work that we've covered in both community and economic development. One of the highlights that, that we're going to be covering will include our very own Mike Sykes, our Business Retention and Expansion Program Manager, who it's my pleasure to, to mention to the public that Mike has just recently welcomed into his family a new puppy rescue by the name of Roxy. So congratulations to Mike. We look forward to that detailed presentation on the new La Porte County Works program. Unfortunately, Mother Nature. We were hopeful to be doing this today, but due to the inclement weather, we'll be, we'll be doing this in a detailed fashion in person. And then, of course, circulating these very important documents in advance of that next meeting. So, and then lastly, Madam President, on February 28th, we'll be presenting to the, along with two local manufacturing company expansion projects, we'll be presenting our 22 annual budget appropriation request to the council. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Tony. Really appreciate it, and I look forward to hearing Mike's retention report. He does a really great job of visiting our current, because as we know, in economic development, it's not just about looking for the next big thing. It's, it's helping to support and honor and nurture the employers we have and make sure that they get the employees that they need to continue to flourish in our county. So thank you for all your hard work. And Mike, I know you're on somewhere on this call, so thank you, Mike, for your work as well. Jeremy, would you like to go next?
Sure, can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you. Thank you.
Hi, Jeremy Sobekki from the La Porte County Parks Department. I had a couple of updates and one request. Wanted to update everybody on the playground out at Bloom. Their contractors started putting that in last week and into this week. So they've had some pretty rough conditions to work in. They did get quite a bit of it done before the snow and now a deep freeze coming. So that may stall them out, but, but that project's going forward. It's, it's, it's looking good. We'll get there. The restroom is, is coming along. Our staff is still working on that on the interior. And obviously parking lot's done. So, so Bloom's coming along. Recently, I went to the council to ask for some more funds to do playgrounds at Creek Ridge and Red Mill, which those are all 20 to 20 to 30 years old as well, wood structures. So we've got some issues with those and thankful that the council approved that money. And we're going to try to go for some more grant money to help make those even better. And then lastly, I've talked to all of the commissioners within the last couple of weeks about trying to move forward with seeing if we can get permission to go ahead and make Seabird property our next county park. So Seabird is a property that was donated to our park foundation several years ago. And it's, they've been holding on to that with the hopes that they could, we could eventually make that a park if that's what the county's wish was. So this property's been off the tax roll for quite some time when it went into a nonprofit. And it's, it's a real forest relic. It's about 40 acres and it is already designated as an Indiana State Nature Preserve, just like a big portion of Red Mill is. So it would be something that we, what we would end up with would be just a dirt trail and a small parking area, very low maintenance as far as the county parks staff is concerned. Just, you know, it's a, something, nothing we would have to mow weekly or anything like that. Basically just check on, pick up trash if people leave it. Very, very beautiful property and we look, we, we would hope and look forward to opening that as our fifth county park if that's the wish of the commission.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeremy. We're excited about this, the new park. Your description of the flora and fauna is just incredible. What a gift for the public to be able to observe that in its natural settings. That's great. And thank you for going to the county council to get the playgrounds funded with the ARP dollars. I think that that's going to be a really great addition for our families and our children.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks so much. Mr. Levandowski, you are next.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Larry Levandowski, Director of Facilities. I wanted to give a few updates. The Long Way to Rolling Prairie project on Monday, it'll be going out for advertising to get started so we can get bids starting coming. It'll be going out on Monday and again on the 14th for the advertising. So that's moving forward really good. I wanted to give everybody a quick update. This morning, snow, it hit us pretty good. We've got everybody in the, in the department. They're working hard outside and they're making good progress. I mean, but again, it's coming down so hard. So you really, it's, it's very hard to keep up with, but we've got walks cleared. We've got parking areas cleared out for the sheriff as much as we can. But just be very careful walking through because it is building up fast so we can keep up with it. And with tomorrow's, with the winds coming in now, it's making it even harder. So hopefully, it just gives the patience and time for tonight, tomorrow. Okay? Then I wanted to talk a little bit about, there were some, I got quite a few phone calls about the Brown Mackey. I've been overseeing the work being done there since we moved out. There's been some questions about what's going on there. We, we did have a dumpster out there yes, the last few days, taking care of getting things hauled away. There was a question about some of the desks and stuff. We've hauled away 32 file cabinets, 24 chairs, seven, 10 desks and seven metal racks that were beyond repair. They, they were rusted out. They were broken legs, a lot of the stuff. Several items have been taken and hauled over to La Porte. We had file cabinets that we hauled up to the prosecutor's office. HR took the desk. We had some file cabinets we hauled to JSC. Again, and then we've hauled everything that was salvageable over to the new courthouse. So I want to reassure everybody, anything that was left in there and the department heads can vouch for it was beyond being used anymore. It, it was, it needed to go. So I said, and we're, we're now in the process. We do have some partitions we're taking down. A lot of the partitions and some of the things that we got over there came from the St. Anthony's Hospital when it was being, before demolition. So we hauled it over there and we repurposed it and used it for the temporarys. We did not have to do any purchasing. So now we're at the point where it's, you know, we put together, screwed it together and whatever we could make it work. So we're going to be getting rid of a lot of that stuff. But anything that is salvageable, as like nine month, they came over, they're going to use some partitions that we had. We're going to be utilizing where we can to take some of this stuff. So we are doing, doing our due diligence on everything that we have over there. We're not just wasting things.
Thank you, Larry.
Madam President, just a question procedurally. If it's the commission's desire to go ahead and take the, the offered property from the park foundation into the park system, you'll want to have a motion of record indicating that that's the desire of the commission and authorizing us to work with Alex Bruegenschmidt, who is the county's special counsel for land transfers, if that's the pleasure of the board.
I'd make a motion that we move forward with that project.
Second.
We have a motion. Joe, was that a second?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move forward on that project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Point of order, Madam President. Just very, very quickly, since we're voting on some of these things, under section 5-14, 1.5-3.5, as well as the emergence, the electronic meetings during a disaster emergency, Both of those sections require that all the votes that we take during a meeting be done by a roll call vote if one or more members are participating via Zoom.
So since there's three of us, you would like Diane to call the roll or at every, or Auditor Stavos?
In accordance with those two IC codes that I read off, we're required to do a roll call vote if, if one or more of us is participating via Zoom.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. So Mr. Stavos, will you call the roll on that last vote, please?
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Rosinsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Mateus.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you so much. So we are closing department head reports. I don't see any other department heads with their hand up.
Run. Excuse me. Barb Mosman.
Oh, Barb, okay.
So she can't raise her hand, but I believe she needed now.
Okay. Barb, are you on the line? Darlene, I cannot hear her. I don't know if anyone else can.
I cannot, no.
Okay.
I cannot hear her. I know she said she had really bad service where she was.
Yeah, yeah. More reason for us to focus on broadband in our county.
Record.
While I'm up here, you know, Darlene, you have La Porte County IT. I just want to say that I was able to find one of my employees a beautiful desk from Brown Mackey and they hauled it over. It's in La Porte for him. And he's going to be able to get rid of an old, you know, thin tin sides metal desk. So I know that, you know, other departments did get items out of there that are very useful.
Thank you. Thank you, Darlene. I think everyone really went through and tried to find anything that was usable out of that. But there were a lot of things that were donated to the county. And so we got them third, fourth hand, and there were a lot of broken items. So I think Mr. Levandowski and his crew have done a good job. We're all pretty, pretty, pretty frugal and always trying to reuse things. So I appreciate you mentioning that you found a, found a good home for that desk.
Does look like Barb Mosman just reconnected.
Okay, thank you. Barb, are you on the line?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Thank you.
Oh, fantastic. Sorry about that. Barb Mosman, Human Resources Director. I just wanted to give a shout out to Larry Levandowski and his team. I was one of those individuals that was able to get a desk from the Brown Mackey building for my part-time assistant and it was the same day service. So thank you very much to them for that. She definitely appreciates it. Also wanted to mention, we were supposed to be holding a job fair today and tomorrow, but due to COVID reasons that had, had to be canceled. And as soon as we are able, I just wanted to let everyone know, we will be getting that rescheduled since we still have positions that need to be filled at Community Corrections, Juvenile Services Center, EMS, within the Sheriff's Department, Highway. So we are still looking for great candidates who want to come work for the county. And if anybody would like to take a look at the available jobs and fill out an application, just visit laportecity.co.in.gov backslash employment. So everybody be safe today. Thank you.
Thanks, Barb. Is there any way that we could, we could use, using technology, do some sort of Zoom informational job fair so that we can answer questions? People could log in, you know, and they could get information about open positions?
Yeah, that's a fantastic idea.
Okay, just, just throwing that out there.
Yep, not a problem. We'll take a look into that.
Thanks so much. Okay. Mike Pollan, you are next. We can't hear you, Mike. No volume on your, I can't hear you. Is anyone else able to hear Mike?
No.
All right.
Oh. I think, Madam President, I think I see both Tony Rodriguez. Just wanted to say something else as well as, I believe, Auditor Stavos.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised, but that's why Mr. Pollan was the only one who had his hand raised. Mr. Pollan, we cannot hear you. Are you able to unmute or fix the volume on your device? There you are.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. I did not get on your agenda for this. I was planning to approach the council to ask to spend out of our non-reverting account for a vehicle replacement. But in case I need to get permission from the commissioners first to approach the council, I would ask for commissioner's support with that.
Can you give us a little background information on the vehicle that's needed?
Yes, so it's the oldest vehicle out of our fleet. It has over 200,000 miles on it. And I'll be putting together a package that has the details on that vehicle, your make, model, mileage, driver, as well as the rest of our fleet with your make, model, driver. So you'll be able to see the age, mileage, all that stuff. And then we'll, we'll get competitive bids for replacement.
I would make that motion that we allow Mr. Pollan to go to the council. I've been urging him for a while. He's got a couple of vehicles there that they really need to get them off the road. We're putting a lot of money in them to keep them on the road. So I would make that motion that Mr. Pollan could go to the council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Stavos, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Mateus.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Rosinsky.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. The ayes have it on Mr. Pollan. Good luck with that.
Thank you. Stay safe out there.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rodriguez, I didn't see your hand raised. Mr. Stavos, it looked like you were trying to physically flag us down. So you have comments?
Just briefly, I'm pleased to report that we are on receipt as of 5:40 PM last night of the 2019 audit report for the State Board of Accounts. And there were some findings. I am collaborating with the current treasurer, former auditor Joey Winski, and her chief deputy. We had an 8 AM meeting with the State Board of Accounts this morning on Zoom. And we will be addressing any of the findings that they had. But this has been a long time coming and I'm pleased that we have this report from the SBOA filed and wanted to report on that too. I'll have two items later on the agenda as well.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? I don't see any other hands raised. Are we good? All right, let's move on. Number, number 10 on the agenda is requests. So the first request, 10A, consider permission to approach the council for additional appropriation of grant matching funds. Mr. Bishop.
Good morning.
Morning.
Reviewing the agenda, I noticed I'm also on Old Business 11B. And it's for the same project. Is there any chance? You can hear both of those now?
I don't have a problem with that. My colleagues, does anyone have a problem?
Okay with me. Sure.
That's fine.
Okay, well, they both deal with the Community Crossings Grant. And as you know, we received the maximum amount of $1 million. And bids were open last commissioner meeting. They were reviewed. There were two bidders, Milestone and Reese and Riley. And I recommend to the board, and you should have the contract, probably not in front of you, but I recommend that the board approve Reese Riley's bid of 2.4 million. So I could turn that into in that, in a timely manner because there is a due date on that and they want that back by the middle of February. So.
I'd make that motion that we approve.
Yeah, Madam President, we've reviewed the contract and it's consistent with prior contracts of a similar nature.
To approve the contract.
So that, that's 10, that's 11B, not, we're, do you need, you need two, two motions, right?
Yes, and then the request would be-
Let's separate it. We'll do, we'll do, we'll do 11B first. So the, the motion for Mr. Rosinsky is to consider acceptance of the Reese Riley Community Crossing bid for 2.4 million. And Mr. Haney, do I have a second?
And Reese Riley was the lower bid on that by about 800, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. That's the one we're talking about. Okay, yeah, because I don't have that exact one in front of me. Yes, so I would second that, absolutely.
So Mr. Stavos, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Mateus.
Aye.
Commissioner Rosinsky.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. So that we have accepted the Reese Riley Community Crossings bid. And we'll go back to 10A, consider permission to approach the council for additional appropriation of grant making funds. Mr. Bishop, could you give us a synopsis again?
Yes, that's again, for the same project with the Community Crossing Grant. It's a 50-50 match. So the- 50/50 match. So the grant, I have to go in front of council for the remaining 50% of the project of the 2.4 million. So I'm just asking your permission to go before the council for that permission to have those funds allocated. As part of the grant process, I already have, I have been in front of the commissioners. There is a commitment letter that needs to be, that was generated and approved already. So this is more from out at this point. Council knows all about this. But yeah, I'm just going to treat it from outie and appreciate a approval.
Motion to approve the request to go to the council for that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Mr. Bishop going to the council for additional appropriation of grant making, grant matching funds. Mr. Stables?
Commissioner Merzinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Mathias.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Three ayes. Thank you.
Thank you. The permission has been granted. Next on the agenda, 10B, consider permission for New Day Foundation to close one lane of traffic for their annual 5K, 10K resurrection run and walk in Cipio Township Park, April 16. Kathy Dive, is she on the line? We need to unmute you, Kathy. Hold on just a moment. Somehow I am not able to do that. So I'm, oh, there you go, Kathy. You're unmuted.
Yes, we are having our annual, well, we've been out for a couple of years because of the COVID. But anyway, we're back again, and we plan on that the 16th. And we would like your permission that we could close one side of the road. We really don't have a lot of traffic that comes through there, but wanted to get your permission anyway.
Thank you, Kathy. I see the sheriff is on. Is there any, any issue with this that you can see, Sheriff Boyd?
I certainly have no issue with it.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request for the New Day Foundation to close one lane of traffic for their annual resurrection run and walk in Cipio Township. All those in favor? Sorry, Mr. Stables, if you could call the role.
Commissioner Mathias.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Merzinski.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming today. We appreciate that. Next on the agenda, consider permission to seek bids for the cleaning company for the Michigan City Courthouse. Mr. Levandowski? And I believe it's, it's request for proposals, not particularly bids, but Mr. Levandowski, are you on still?
I'm covering for Larry.
Okay, okay.
Caitlin Sims, Facilities Office Manager.
Morning, Caitlin.
Hi. At the January council meeting, Councilman Mark Uggelski requested Facilities look for pricing for cleaning at the Michigan City Courthouse. So we're here today to request permission to advertise for proposals with a 20, February 24th due date, so that we can evaluate, look at them, and come for the next mistress meeting, and then present at the council meeting in March.
Motion to approve the request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, Mr. Stables?
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Mathias.
Aye.
Commissioner Merzinski.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Caitlin.
Thank you, Caitlin. Good job.
Good job. All right. Thumbs up. So under Old Business, we have considered the second and final reading of the ordinance to amend the E911 advisory board.
motion to approve on the second reading. Title only?
Second.
So just for the public's understanding, this is to change the construct of the construct of the E911 advisory board to remove the two mayors of Michigan City and LaPorte, because their their chiefs are serve on the board. And generally speaking, they are unable to attend the meeting. So the chiefs serve as their designee for their community. Mr. Stables, will you call the role? We have a motion and a second.
Madam President, just quickly before we vote, there would no, there were no objections from either mayor, correct? They're both in favor of this, from what I understand. Okay, thank you.
I recommended it.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that for the record. Thank you.
Point of order, did we, forgive me, did we read it by title? Do we read the title? Already? Maybe we did.
Well, when I, when I read it into, when I moved to the agenda, second and final reading of the ordinance to amend the E911 advisory board.
Okay, that's the name of it. Commissioner Mathias.
Aye.
Commissioner Merzinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you. We'll move on. Consider, this is 11C, because we we took 11B out of order with Planner Mitch Bishop. 11C, consider recommendation from the county engineer on awarding the contract for Metta View Estates subdivision drainage work. Mr. Sullivan, are you on? Here he is.
Morning, Commissioners. I'm actually here in the command center with Darlene. She's doing a fine job keeping everything going. Yes.
Thank you, Jay.
We received the bids. Woodruff was the low bid for the Metta View project. Their bid came in at a little over $1 million, $1,43,497, some change. Yes, my recommendation would be to go with them. Does the county council need to review that contract before we accept that?
It needs to be reviewed by our attorney.
Yeah.
Yeah. I apologize, but I was out of town for a couple days. Along with that, since I get that contract to him, everything seems to be in order. I didn't do everything. I did meet with Woodruff and Sons at suggestion of the commissioners to discuss extending the water, the drainage pipe to the property in question. And they came back with a $60,000 fee addition to the original contract. So I guess I would, pending the, you know, legal council's approval of the contract, then I guess I'd ask permission to go before the council, go ask for the money for the contract. The council originally approved $700,000 for the drainage project. So I'd have to go before them and ask for another 400, $443,000 approximately for the for the project.
Certainly, I would move to allow, to allow him to approach the council for the additional funding that's that's needed. I would also point out that 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 bid came in nearly $1 million less than the next closest five bids. So that is a extremely aggressive bid. And I think it's, we should move on quickly.
Second.
So before we call for a vote, Mr. Friedman, have you, have you reviewed the contract and the addendum to the contract that that Mr. Sullivan is suggesting?
No, I'd like to see the contract. Certainly, if you could make the approval of the grant award or the bid award subject to approval by or review by our office. Also, I think there's a question about, it would be a nominal amendment to allow the additional part. I think it is not material enough. It would require a rebidding. So it's encouraging to hear Mr. Sullivan say that only for an additional 60, 70, are we going to be able to serve the other homes out there. Is that, Mr. Sullivan, is that what you understand that this will cover everyone out there, including Mr. Smith's property and others who are concerned?
Yes, the addition, there's about 232 feet addition to the existing line that's there. And it's not just a drainage pipe, but it's also a French drain where it's encased in gravel. So that'll help lower some of the water table in that area. So yes, I do, it'll definitely benefit, benefit the drainage of the area.
Okay.
So I would amend my motion to include the the points expressed by our attorney.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Stables, will you call the role?
Commissioner Mathias.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Merzinski.
Aye.
Three ayes. Just for the record, I think the additional amount would be 343,000, not 443,000.
I believe that's accurate, yes.
Just to correct Jay.
I would look at my numbers, but I don't disagree with you.
700,000 plus 334 is 3, 343. So no big deal. Just thought I'd clarify for the public record.
And I will get contract. And I haven't got received the addendum yet from Woodruff and Sons, just a verbal email saying this would be the amount. I'll get a formal addendum from there. I get all that, get that information to Mr. Friedman then. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan, next on the agenda, under New Business, 12A, consider amendment to Securus contract, LaPorte County Jail, regarding addition of the company paid onsite tablet administrator at no cost to the county. Sheriff Boyd?
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for considering this. We are currently under contract with Securus Technology. They are our inmate communication system. They would like to place a tablet administrator here at no cost to us. They would pay this individual to be here. Very similar to other contract services that we have, like Geo Medical in our kitchen. We would certainly be involved in the hiring process and have right to refusal or termination of anything that went wrong. But this is a win, win for us. It will not cost us any money. Securus Technology is paying for it, and this cost will not be moved towards the inmates that participate in this system. It has been sent to the county attorney's office, and they've reviewed it.
Madam President, the commission is the fifth amendment to the master contract with Securus. I know the department's been very happy with Securus, and we're comfortable recommending the fifth amendment, please.
Motion to approve the contract.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Stables?
Commissioner Merzinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Mathias.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. The amendment has passed. Let's move on. Consider commission president or their designee as a POA on the vehicle title. That's, as Mr. Friedman stated, that probably could have been worded a little bit differently. This has to do with allowing the Sheriff's Department designee to sign off on on Sheriff Department vehicles. And this is more just for efficiency. So, Mr. Friedman, could you just?
Yes, it's really a housekeeping. We've had Major Haffercamp has been doing this for some time with various titles. And we just want to make sure that it's in the record of the commissions. If there's any question down the road, an audit or anything else, we can indicate commissioners have given full authority to Major Haffercamp to accomplish transfer of titles. And this is just on Sheriff's Department vehicles. Commission maintains the control and designation of all other titles on all other vehicles which are in the name of the county commissioners.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Stables?
Commissioner Mathias.
Aye.
Commissioner Merzinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to 12C, consider Carlson software agreement for real estate. Mr. Stables?
Commissioners, this is really a de minimis item. It's $295 a year for a software renewal agreement with Carlson that the real estate office, my real estate office, has been using the firm for a number of years. And ask for your renewal of the agreement for $295.
Move to renew the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Mr. Stables?
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Mathias.
Aye.
Commissioner Merzinski.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. The agreement has been passed. Consider, sure, consider Maximus agreement for the auditor's office. Mr. Stables?
A little more complicated. Maximus has been doing the work for a number of years on the reimbursement. It's called the CAP Plan. There's a capital allocation plan that they put together. It's quite complicated. It's a means of allocating costs that different departments of the county incur with regard to child, child support 4D, that we can get reimbursed from state and federal. The reimbursement, so they do an annual submission that allows us to get money back. The amount of the contract is $11,200 per year for them to do the 2021, 2022, and 2023 reports. I would defer to Mr. Friedman on, the contract's cancelable but will within 60 days. But I would otherwise defer to Mr. Friedman on whether or not that period can be signed up for with that long.
Maximus has had a good history of working with the county on child support enforcement collection. We're comfortable with the contract as proposed.
Good term. Okay. It's going to be lowered by, I'm happy to say that the rate's going to be lowered to $11,200 per year from $12,200. And I think that's all I have. Hope you would approve.
Savings are good. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, Mr. Stables?
Commissioner Merzinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Mathias.
Aye.
Three ayes. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. The agreement has been approved. Next on the agenda, we have, I think, a really positive thing. We have an update from our MS4 Soil and Water Conservation District proposal to take advantage of the fact that we have some openings in the MS4 department and trying to find more efficient and effective ways of delivering service and technical assistance to across our community in regards to water. And so Nicole Massakar is here, Mike Pollan is here, Chris Havens is here. They have been working for a couple of months now on creating, oh, I see, and Don Modi, you are here also. Thank you for joining us this morning. We want to invite them to kind of update the public and all of the commissioners and and department heads on some of the work that we have been discussing on how we can deliver better, more effective, and more efficient services and not cause any additional costs. So this is exciting. I don't know who's going to present. Nicole, are you going to start us off?
Sure, I'll start us off. I also just want to mention that also our soil conservationist, Michael Herron, is here. And another board member, Brian Brighter, is also here as well, along with partners from the city of LaPorte and their stormwater department. So a lot of interest in what's been going on. Mike, Mike Pollan, do you mind if I just kind of start things off? Or would you like to? You okay with that?
Nicole.
Okay. I did provide a very brief kind of two pager proposal to the commissioners this morning. Did everybody receive that?
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Haney, you received that?
You sent, yes, yes, I did.
Yes, that's right. Okay. Essentially, what we've been working on is, as you know, our entire MS4 department, which is our municipal separate stormwater system, with the four S's R, retired, flash, left the department. So being given the proximity of that department to ours and the overlap of the tasks that we all perform for the community, we've been sort of stepping in and limping it along and making sure that the community is still being served, that contractors are getting what they need, complaints are being handled, that type of thing. So we are here to essentially offer our permanent services in that regard and ask that the commissioners consolidate those two departments and then give us permission to request the consolidation of the two departmental budgets as well. And then I would be here to answer any questions. I don't know how much detail you'd like me to go into about the functions of the programs and kind of what we do, Sheila, but I'm happy to be here to do that.
Thank you. I don't know, Chris, or Michael, or Mike Pollan, if you want to jump in. We've had numerous conversations and, or Mr. Modi, maybe you would like to summarize. They're looking for a way to use the technical expertise we have in our, among our staff, and do a better job of making sure that we're meeting the needs of our community. And really, this, I think, is a great opportunity for us to to expand the work we're doing from education to technical assistance. So I don't know if anyone wants to jump in and say something. Mr. Friedman, do you see any issues that we need to be concerned about?
I think, as you've indicated, Commissioner Mathias, I mean, other members of the commission have been apprised on this. It represents an efficiency. It's tapping the expertise of the staff. I know both the former MS4 board chair and our building commissioner, Mike Pollan, is enthused about this, as is the staff and the board of the solid, or the Soil and Water Conservation District. So it seems to be a win-win. But anything, Nicole, or Mike, maybe you can also indicate some of the functions, just so the public knows a little bit more of the stormwater permit functions that the that the district would be involved in. I think it might be helpful.
Absolutely. Mike, would you like to? Or would you like me to continue on? Okay. A stormwater, a stormwater program is a function of the Clean Water Act, kind of passed through our State Department of Environmental Management. The idea is that communities can perform these tasks in a way that best, you know, meets their water quality issues and their staffing. But there are some, what, six, what we call minimum control measures. And so you can be as creative and innovative as you'd like to be, and as above and beyond as you'd like to be with your program. But you do have to meet those six minimum control measures. So the first two are involved with public education, public outreach, public involvement. So that would be tasks like creating a citizen stormwater advisory group, making sure you're bringing in different, you know, representation from members of the community, and tailoring your program to meet their needs. So getting people that might be. your program to meet their needs. So getting people that might be experiencing flooding or, you know, certain adverse impacts from stormwater, members of, you know, the commercial sector that may have parking lots that contribute to this, that may have ideas how to mitigate that, or may be impacted by potential, you know, legislation, that type of thing. There's also a task that is related to inspecting construction sites, making sure that not only they're in compliance, but helping them be in compliance, so educating them about what needs to happen to make sure that their site is not contributing sediment and nutrients to our storm drains, which go directly to our lakes and rivers. They bypass the waste water treatment plant, so that it's really important that they understand how they can help prevent that. And then there are some issues related to what happens post-construction. So let's say, you know, Starbucks, if they're on them, comes in, they do great things, their construction site is great during the process, but what happens, you know, once that construction project is completed, how do they maintain those, you know, those practices after that? And then there is a task that is related to what we call good housekeeping. So that would be within county facilities, making sure county highway understands, you know, how to keep their vehicles from, you know, leaking and that type of thing, understanding what needs to be done to help everybody do the right thing to keep our water clean. That's really the ultimate goal of the entire program related to stormwater. So we have, amongst our staff, we have myself, I have been, you know, the education coordinator for the Soil and Water Conservation District for 15 years, working for the county, so doing a lot of public education outreach related to this exact thing. Michael Herman is our soil conservationist, so he is out there in the field providing technical assistance to landowners already, mostly related to conservation in terms of agriculture, but not entirely. He deals with erosion and sedimentation issues all over the place. And then Chris Havens, he is our administration manager, who has been really kind of the champ here throughout this process and dealing with folks that, you know, have been already involved with the stormwater program in the past and had, you know, issues, making sure that, you know, contractors get responded to and that type of thing, communicating with IDM throughout the process. So I think we have the, you know, the talent, we know what we're doing. We've been, you know, sort of tangentially involved with the program for a long time. The origins of MS4 programs were really were in Soil and Water Conservation Districts. We kind of handled this before things became more municipal. There's been a lot of changes over the years, but we're getting ready to enter into a new permit process, so it's a good time, kind of, really, no matter what the current staffing issue would have been, to be thinking about, you know, improvements in the program and gains and efficiencies and all that sort of thing, because it's going to be a new permit cycle. So we'll have to, we would have to be doing all of this no matter what. So it's timely as well. Again, answer all the questions.
Nicole, I think there's a few other things to mention. First of all, that this is removing some of the silos, so we have a really, a lot of technical expertise with Mike Pollan. He's got an MS4 background, so he understands, and his department can really work closely with your group. And then the other thing is, we have a good partnership with Trail Creek and this town of Long Beach, who don't have enough money or need for a full-time staff person, so they are a part of our collaborative partnership, and they are very supportive of this move. So I think those are all really great wins for the entire county. And your board, your board is supportive. Mr. Julie, I don't know if you want to say anything, but it sounds like the board thinks that this is a really positive move for the organization. Did you want to jump in and say anything? Done? Wait, we got to unmute you. Hold on. Darlene, can you unmute, or whoever's got control here, unmute Mr. Modi?
Activate.
There you go.
You were muted.
I would just like to say that, first thing is, I'm chairman of the board. We are very supportive of this. I think it's a great fit. I mean, we do a lot of that work anyway. I think it's a good thing for the county. It's a consolidation of two groups into one. We have the expertise to do this, and we are very excited to do it.
Matt President?
Yes.
I've kind of been involved with this from the beginning, when Mr. Pollan took the building commissioner job, and that left Mr. Brown, and then Mr. Brown retired, we had a department with no people.
Right.
So, and one of the things we had considered was to hire an outside firm to handle all of the different things until Soil and Water stepped up, and we met with them a couple times and heard of all of the positive reinforcements that they have, all of the talent that they bring to the table. And when I found out that Mr. Modi would be involved, and it's a no-brainer from here on, I would make a motion that we move forward with this consolidation for the MS4 board. It is, it's an amazing thing to happen for the county.
If you could too, perhaps, it's a twofold motion. One, to, if that's a pleasure of the board, to authorize the consolidation of the two departments, and two, to authorize Soil and Water to seek consolidation of the two budgets, because in consulting with the council attorney, we'll need the council authorizing the consolidation of the two budgets.
I would make motion to approve both of those points.
And I'll second that. It's been, I really want to say thank you to the folks out at Soil and Water. I've been out and spoke with them a couple times over the last couple of months, and they've really done a good job putting this together and stepping up for some of the unfortunate events that wound up transpiring out there, you know, next to them. So I'm really, really pleased with everything that I've seen out there from Soil and Water. You've all done a great job, and looking forward to great things in the future. Thank you.
So.
Thank you to the staff and for your leadership on getting this idea from just a concept into action. And I think this is a win-win for everyone. It's a win financially, and it's a win about efficiency, and really putting dedicated people who really care, not hiring it out where people are, it's just a business. This is people who care about our county, who live here, who work here, who raise their families here, and we're, we think this is a win-win. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Stables, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Mathias.
Aye.
Commissioner Rosinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Uh-oh.
Oops.
Mr. Mathias, you froze up.
Oh, she froze.
Lost Sheila.
She froze.
Does the vice president want to adjourn the meeting?
Give her just a minute, maybe.
I'm not surprised at the technical issues we've been having. My, the whole house generator has kicked on twice this morning, and I'm looking outside. I have a gauge. I look out the back window, across the backyard and across the hayfield. If I can see the Pressles house, that's not bad. I can't even see the hayfield. That's how bad it is out here in the country, and I haven't seen a snowplow for a while. The road is pretty treacherous. Sheila, are you?
I think she dropped off completely. Hopefully, maybe my suggestion would be give her just, you know, maybe another 60 or 90, or 120 seconds, something like that, to let her, hopefully she can reconnect via her phone, I would assume.
Did you have any closing comments, or Mr. Haney?
Yeah, I do. So it's actually not a, not a, not a, not a bad idea to take that while hopefully she can get back on here.
While we're younger.
Of course. So it's been a pretty busy couple of weeks here. We've had a number of different things, just for brevity's sake, since we're wrapping up here, and since the commission president is with us right now. I'd just like to share a couple of quotes here that are appropriate for our, as we enter into Black History Month here. First one is from a young lady by the name of Africa Brooke, and she says, "When you become well-trained at self-censoring, you'll struggle to know what it is you stand for. You then become easy to sway and manipulate, because your sense of self is not rooted in solid principles that keep you in integrity. The opinions and beliefs of the group become yours. Said groups decide what your belief system should look like and how it should operate. In this state, you'll find yourself regurgitating that which has been deemed acceptable whilst steering clear of anything that might cause you to be rejected." So, very, very intelligent young lady that's... There we go. It's a very intelligent young lady who's gone through quite a transformation over the years. It's really interesting to look up, to look up and into her story, Africa Brooke. I have another quote from Frederick Douglass here. He says, "Liberty is meaningless where the right to utter one's thoughts and opinions has ceased to exist. That of all rights is the dread of tyrants. It is the right which they first of all strike down." And I have two quotes I don't think I've used from Martin Luther King Jr. before here. One is, "One has a moral responsibility to obey unjust laws," and I think we're seeing part of that to our neighbors to the north in Canada. And he followed up with that in another, in another speech with, "Mass civil disobedience can use rage as a constructive and creative force." That's so appropriate when we see folks, be it here in our country or around the world, standing up for their rights and doing so in the honor in which Martin Luther King Jr. affected so much change over his short life here on this planet. So with that, everybody, please have a very, very safe afternoon and evening here, and stay off the roads if you can, because it is pretty nasty out there. Thank you.
Sheila, have you gotten back on? See her?
Commissioner, she sent me a message and asked if you'd just take over. She lost internet.
Okay. Okay, good. I wanted to, with this emergency outside going on, boy, it's bad, I wanted to mention that our sheriff's department, and that includes the garage, our EMS, doing an amazing job out there, putting their life on the line, literally, in dangerous situation. Ask people, if you don't have to be on the road, stay off the road. You're putting yourself and your fellow Americans in peril. You're causing more work for the sheriff's department and also for our highway department. Our highway department, hats off to them boys, coming in at 3 o'clock in the morning, working 12-hour shifts. I can't say enough good about, about that whole department and the job that Duane is doing with them. Our maintenance department, coming in this morning to clean up the sidewalk, clean out the parking lots, making it easier for our sheriff to do their job. A very, hats off to all those departments. Also, I had a chat with our veteran service officer, Joe Golick, and I have mentioned in the past several times about all of the money that comes into the county via the BSOs for... Darlene, Darlene, are you paying attention? For our veterans, thousands, millions of dollars, just this January, just this January, two veterans who have been waiting for their compensation from the federal government, total of $1.1 million for these two veterans for well-deserved benefits that they have coming. This is the work that our BSOs do every day. Can't say enough about it. In fact, I will be meeting at 1 o'clock today with representative from Senator Todd Young's office, wanting to talk about veterans' issues and about all the things that are going on there. A lot of good people doing a lot of good work. And I also have been in continuous conversation with Matt Riordan, Mark Jagalski, and people from Congressman Murvan's office about the lift bridge in Michigan City, coming up with new ideas. We've got an opportunity here to tap into some money, not only from the state, but from federal money, and we're coming up with a good alternative to spending a million and a half dollars every year on that lift bridge. We've got some really great suggestions here. We met yesterday on a pro bono base with a guy from US I Engineering, who gave, who'd been through this process before in another county, and gave us some really excellent suggestions. So they'll be coming more on that in the future. But other than that, everybody, stay safe, stay off the road, stay out of people's way. And what, Darlene, you're waving like crazy. What?
Commissioner Mathias was able to reconnect via phone, so I think she may have comments.
God, it's too late, sorry. Go ahead, Sheila. Go ahead, Sheila. Oh, she needs to be unmuted.
Well, I did that, but then she said she's closing it out then.
Okay.
Alcohol.
Well, if that's the case, we are in conversation with the sheriff's department and with EMS about, and EMA, about if this keeps up, about whether we will declare a state of emergency. That has not been done, but if that happens, everybody will be notified via RAVE. So with that, seeing no further business, I would say this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.